All the heroes here.
All right, I will get this meeting going. I call us to order. With me I have the wonderful,
do I really have to do this?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes. There you go.
That makes me uncomfortable. I would like that to be in the record, thank you. Um, I have Sarah Sadowski.
Yes.
Jim Richards, myself, Jessica Campbell, and Cara Meeker will be with us shortly. We also have Jack Dunn, and I keep wanting to call you Brian, even though I know your name is Scott. Um, Scott McIntyre. Um, so with that, I will call us to order, and Jack, would you like to introduce us to your incredible friend?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So Scott McIntyre is from C-Biz, um, who has done our audit. I'll tell you a little bit about the company. Um, but we just completed our FY twenty-four audit for both, um, the grants and the general and all funds. Um, also Owen Desmond, the grant manager, is here, and Maureen Cale, the business manager. So, um, you probably see a lot, you see a lot more of Ellen, but, uh...
But Maureen does all the work.
Exactly, exactly. There you go. So, uh, but I'll turn it over to Scott for a presentation on how things are going.
Uh, good evening. Scott McIntyre. I'm a partner with C-Biz, and as Jack alluded to, I'll tell you a little bit about the company. I think it was just about two years ago that I was here. Um, and at the time, I think we had issued our audit from a couple of years ago as Melanson. Um, Melanson's a company I've been with for thirty-eight years, and back in twenty-twenty-three, uh, we knew we needed to make a move and merge with a larger firm. Um, no one's going into accounting anymore, so please encourage your students.
Yeah.
Um, they will do very well if they go into accounting. Uh, but no one is going into accounting right now, so we needed to find additional resources to continue to be able to provide services to school districts, cities and towns, and, uh, here in New Hampshire and across New England. So, little did I know that less than a year later, uh, Markham, which was a privately owned CPA firm, very much the way, uh, Melanson was, although much, much bigger, uh, would be acquired by C-Biz. Uh, C-Biz is a publicly traded corporation. Uh, they have a related organization, uh, as you see on perhaps the stapled letter in the upper left-hand corner. C-Biz CPAs is the name of the firm that actually does the audit. Uh, we're, I'll call it, this is not a technical or legal term, but we're like a division of C-Biz, uh, the publicly traded corporation. Um, both with the Marker merger and now the acquisition from C-Biz, uh, the, it's really, I, I'm very much, um, in favor of it, just to give you my opinion. And again, I've been in this state for, doing business in this state for close to forty, forty years in local government, you know, school district auditing. Um, Markham's government practice was probably smaller than Melanson's, so when we made that move, I knew that, although it was a national firm, I knew that everything would essentially run through New England, where we are here in New England. Uh, in C-Biz, while we're finding they have little pockets of government work, uh, around the, around the country, uh, the vast majority of it still resides here in New England. So, from an operational standpoint, uh, the government practice of C-Biz CPAs runs through New England. Uh, so that's why I'm very happy about it. Uh, they, they, they look to New England to lead the charge. So, just wanted to give you that overview, because things have changed a lot, um, in the industry of public accounting, and obviously, two years ago, I was here with Melanson. Um, I don't think I came last year, but your reports were audited by Markham. Uh, this year, they're audited by C-Biz. You deserve to understand a little bit of what's, what's going on. Now, on to some of the other business at, at hand. Uh, tonight, uh, there were three reports that were available to you, the stapled report. I'm going to call that the governance letter. More on that in just a minute. Uh, the thinner of the two documents is what I refer to as the single audit, and the thicker one is your, is your basic financial statements. I'm essentially going to start with the governance letter, and I'm going to move into the financial statements, and I will conclude with, with the single audit. Um, the governance letter, that, yeah, um, quite honestly, that's probably a little bit of a slang term that we in the industry, uh, use. Um, our professional standards require us to report to those charged with governance. That's the actual text in the standard, professional standards that we are required to follow. So, rather than call it those charged with governance letter, we just call it the governance letter. This really tells you what you want to note, in my opinion, you, you likely want to know tonight. I don't think there's any, be anything in the financial statements that surprises you. Um, yeah, it's, it's in the governance letter, and in the last document, the single audit report, uh, those are the, um, that, that's really what you, you want to hear from your auditor. What this letter tells you, and as I just looked down at some of my, my notes, it begins by telling you the professional stand, what we did, uh, and what our responsibility is. It outlines a little bit, uh, the, references the engagement letter, and the engagement letter is what also outlines our responsibility and the responsibility of, of, of manage, management. Um, over on page two of the governance letter, um, you know, we follow the plan scoping and timing of the engagement. Um, the bullet item there at the top, this catches a lot of people's attention, so it deserves a couple of minutes of, of conversation. We've identified the following significant risk of a material misstatement. A lot of people read that, and they be, they become concerned. Uh, I will tell you that our professional standards require us to identify that as a significant risk of material misstatement in every audit that we do. And not just we, it's built into the professional standards, so anyone doing that audit, doing an audit, has to identify that as a significant risk. So what does that mean? That means we in turn have to identify specific audit procedures to mitigate that risk. That's all it means. It doesn't mean that there is a material risk. We have to identify it as a significant risk, and then develop auditing tests and procedures to mitigate and help us come to the conclusion that there were no material over, uh, ma- management didn't override the internal control structure in any material manner. That's all that means. And so a lot, it does catch people's attention, because it talks about, it's a significant risk. Yes, it is, but hopefully I put it in the proper context. Um, below that, there are some qualitative aspects, uh, really those three bullet items at the, at the bottom there. Those are the significant estimates that you have in your financial statements, the estimated useful lives of your capital assets, and of course, your net pension and net OPEB liabilities, and what we call the related accounts, the deferrals of, um, inflows and outflows. Uh, at the top of the third page, this is the part that gets a little fun. Uh, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. You'll just note that that's a very nice short sentence and to, to the point. Couple of paragraphs below that, it talks, uh, the corrected, I'm sorry, I need to talk about the independence paragraph. Some slight addition to this paragraph over prior years. Um, what, what we do here at the district, we do it with the city of Concord, and we do it for virtually every client that, that we have in, in, in New England. Not all, but virtually all is, we assist in the preparation of the actual financial statements. Um, it's all based on the underlying books and records here at Concord School District, uh, but we assist with the conversion from modified accrual to accrual, and just as it pulls together. We have great software that does it, and like I said, we do it for, for virtually all of our clients, but again, professional standards require that. I, I tell you that this evening, so...
Scott, before you move on, can you just, for the sake of any of our community that are watching, would you please, uh, just define OPEB for us?
Oh, of course. OPEB, or O-P-E-B. It stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And when they say other, they mean other than pension. And what it really means is retiree healthcare.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. That paragraph tells you that there were no material audit adjustments discovered as a result of the procedures we did. Disagreements with management, there, there were none. Again, a nice short paragraph in there. And that really is the, uh, the heart, the heart, or the meat and potatoes of our, our governance letter. Uh, it tells you what we did. It tells you any significant audit findings. If, if we had found that, uh, cash was not being regu- reconciled on a regular and timely basis, those issues would be reported in here. Uh, so this is a very succinct letter. It, it communicates to you, those charged with governance, uh, everything that our professional standards require us to, to communicate to you. Now, moving into the financial statements, um, again, that's the thicker of the two bound documents. Um, if I could turn your attention to, to page one, this is our independent auditor's report. Um, I'm going to spend just a minute, a minute or two on this, and then talk about some of the, the key account balances in there. Um, this is, technically, it's known as an unmodified opinion. More frequently, people would refer to it as a clean audit opinion, but technically, it's an unmodified opinion. Our opinion doesn't have any modifications to it. In other words, based on the auditing standards that we followed, we follow two sets of auditing standards, as outlined in the basis of opinion paragraph. In our opinion, your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles here in the United States for states and lo- local governments, so. Um, not, not news there, but certainly something that's worth, worth pointing out. So, um, I'm going to hop all the way over to page four. Page four through ten is what is known as management's discussion and analysis. This is a great resource to go back to maybe after this meeting, and maybe some of you forget half of what I said, and which would be, which is probably what happens at most of the meetings that, that I do. Uh, it's a great resource to go back to at a later point in time to help understand why certain key account balances may, may have changed. Uh, I am going to wrap up my part of the financial statements by pointing to one particular paragraph that really focuses only on the, on the general fund. But more on that in a minute. Over on print page eleven, uh, this is your statement of net position. Um, I'll take a minute and remind you that included in this set of financials, this basic financial statements, there are, there are really two sets of financial statements. Uh, there's a long-term perspective and a short-term perspective. Both bases are, come from the underlying books and records here in the district, uh, which are mostly kept in, which are kept in the modified accrual. Part of the financial statement preparation process is we assist in the conversion from modified accrual to accrual. Page eleven is the accrual basis or long-term perspective, uh, balance sheet. Technically, it's called a statement of net position. All I really want to talk about here are two things, because they, we just don't think, uh, in our professional opinion, we don't think any conversation about local governments' financial statements would be complete without quickly talking about pension and OPEB. I could talk about them for hours. I'm not planning on doing that tonight. If you have questions, I'm, I'm sure I can help, or I can figure out the, the answer. Uh, but if you look down this column of numbers, uh, two-thirds of the way down the page, uh, in the non-current liability section, you see your net pension liability of seventy-eight point nine million dollars. So as of six, June thirty, twenty twenty-four, your net pension liability was at seventy-eight point nine million. I do want to point out, it's a little bit of a technicality, but that liability is technically measured as of June thirty, twenty-three. For, for timing issues, it would be nearly impossible for the retirement system to get audited as of six thirty, twenty-four, prepare what needs to be prepared for your district, the city, and all the local governments. So professional standards require you to go back a, a year. So when I was preparing tonight, I noticed that that liability went down about a million dollars. And quite honestly, I, I, I had, had to stop and think. I would have thought it might have gone down a little bit longer, a little bit more than a million dollars. In twenty-twenty-two, it went up quite a bit, because market returns weren't, weren't good. If it's measured as of six thirty, twenty-three, it didn't have all of calendar year twenty-three to, from a investment return standpoint, to sort of bounce back a little bit. So, um, a couple of other important things on your pension liability. Uh, it's measured with a six and a half percent discount rate. In other words, that's what you expect the future earnings, the return on investments will be. Uh, very consistent, uh, with most other states and local governments. We do have some pension plans that are actually still above seven, uh, but we're working with them to perhaps take a, a more conservative view, but, uh, yours is a, a very conservative uh, dis- discount rate. Um, on the not, total pension liability of twenty-eight point nine million, I'll just round that up to, to twenty-nine million. I would just want to point out that there's two pieces to that. Is your, that what, what I refer to?
Hi. So, I'm sorry. The chair said I could have just asked you the question instead of sneakily trying to ask her the question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm new to the finance committee, so I apologize. Um, I'm curious about the not, the net pension liability, the seventy-eight million.
Yeah.
Can you help me conceptualize, is that what we have in investments that, that will eventually be paid out, or is that what we're sort of on the hook for based on the teacher contracts, and what we know that, what these people's pensions will be?
Much more the latter.
Okay.
Uh, the district is a contributing member of the New Hampshire retirement system. And when it says your net pension liability, that starts with, uh, the, the total pension liability for retirees and employees here at, 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 at the district. You calculate, the actuary would calculate the total expected pension liability, and that gets discounted or netted down by your proportional share of the assets of the plan. So, your total pension liability, I don't have, it's not in your report, but would be something well north of seventy-eight point nine, and your proportional share of the investments bring it down to a net pension liability.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
And the, the OPEB, as I was just pointing out, is, I just want to point out that there's really two pieces there. The district has its, an OPEB, it, it has an OPEB benefit. It really doesn't have a plan, uh, but by law, these retirees can stay on the active healthcare plan, so there is an implicit subsidy included that they are earning every year that they're here by the district. They are earning what I would refer to as an implicit benefit. There are, there's no check that's being made payable to the employee or eventual retiree, but them staying on your healthcare plan, once they retire, the presumption is, actuarily speaking, they're older, it will be more expensive. There is an implicit subsidy there. The second piece, and it's a, the second piece is, is a smaller piece, but through the New Hampshire retirement system, uh, they do offer, they have for, uh, I think almost twenty years, offered a medical subsidy benefit, uh, to, to the retirees. So, um, through the New Hampshire retirement system is a small piece of an OPEB liability that you, your, your district, uh, records on its, on its financial statement. So there's really two pieces in there. I'm going to pause there just for a minute. Um, again, I mentioned, those are really the, the two principal things that we think are important from the statement of net position, which is the long-term perspective balance sheet. Before I move into the general fund and budget versus actual results, I'll pause there just for a minute to see if there are any other questions. Oh, before I pause for questions, I wanted to, I usually try to, uh, put some context to the, the pension li- liability. Jack, we determined it, it's scheduled to be fully funded in twenty-thirty-seven?
Twenty-thirty-nine.
What's that?
Twenty-thirty-nine.
Twenty-thirty-nine. Uh, so that the, the New Hampshire retirement system is on track to be fully funded by, by twenty-thirty-nine, you know, fourteen years from now. So, I guess the easiest way for me to maybe add some context to, to that liability, which is a little bit daunting. You keep doing what you're doing for the next fourteen years, that number becomes zero. You are making contribution to the plan on a regular basis in accordance with the plan documents and requirements. You keep doing that for another fourteen years, that liability become, comes zero, assuming all the, all the actuarial assumptions that are part of the, the liability come true. And, you know, from, uh, that last part there, I didn't want to scare anybody, because the, I really didn't mean to, but I kind of had to say it. Um, part of our audit procedures are evaluating those, uh, assumptions. And if we didn't think those assumptions were realistic, uh, we probably would have pushed back to the district, which would have probably had to go to the, uh, to the state retirement system and, and the like. We do think the assumptions are, are very realistic, and they're, they're, it's just a matter of time, uh, before that liability gets fully funded. So now I'll stop and see if the, um, committee members have any, any questions on pension or OPEB.
Uh, Scott, I, just quick one. I, I'm old enough, I remember when discount rates were closer to eight percent.
Mm-hmm.
We're currently at six and a half percent, which I think is pretty good, but in your opinion, is that a reasonable assumption for us to be making, or should, would you see that being, you know, one way or the other, a little bit?
Uh, first of all, a correction or clarification. If, if I said six and a half, please forgive me. I meant six point seven five.
Okay.
As soon as I heard you say it, I knew I needed to look it up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because it didn't, didn't sound right. Uh, six point seven five. I think that's very realistic.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think we should clarify that we don't have the ability to set that. That's all set by the legislature. So, they control the New Ho- New Hampshire retirement. I think it's RSA one hundred controls that. Um, but the legislature decides. They just tell you what you got to pay.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to, since we have Scott here.
Yeah.
I thought I'd ask if that's a reasonable or a rea- a good number, because I know we don't have an opportunity to, to necessarily set that or even influence it, but we do have to pay for it financially if it's a bad assumption, and I just sort of wanted to know where we stood on that one. But it reassures me that you think that six point seven five is a pretty reasonable number.
I do. And, and in a small group like this, and the chair has indicated that wants some, I'm not giving you the five-minute version here, um, so I, this may be a little more than I had planned on, but to sort of, your point about, um, the reasonable rate and Jack's point to the, the RSAs, um, the RSAs deal with funding. What we're looking at is accounting, and if that sounds like a, a technical difference, it's more than just a technical difference. Ten years ago, when Gatsby sixty-eight came out, the buzzword around, uh, Gatsby sixty-eight, which is required, which, that standard, accounting standard, requires all this stuff about pension. The buzzword around was funding of pensions and accounting for pensions are divorced. They don't speak to each other. You can have your funding model, but, which comes into play, this politics get involved. Accounting, this is designed to pull the, the, somebody messing with the discount rate, uh, away, so the accounting is based on, I think the, the desire is so it's not influenced by, by pol- politics. That's a pretty, I don't get into that very often with, with groups, but do know that there is a very clear distinction between the funding of pensions and accounting. I have another city that I work with in a different state, and from a, from an accounting standpoint, I saw this coming about five years ago, that I knew they were going to be fully funded from an accounting standpoint in three years. But I knew that from a funding schedule, it was going to be five. So, they were all excited that they were going to get fully funded, but then they still had two years left of big payments. And I knew that they're, they needed to understand that there's a difference between accounting and funding.
Thank you.
Okay. On to the general fund, which is probably what everybody wants to talk about. Uh, page, page thirteen. Uh, page thirteen is the governmental funds balance sheet. Page fifteen is the governmental funds statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. I'm going to, for the most part, focus on the first column of numbers, the general fund, but I do want to point out that, once again, this year, uh, your grants fund is a ma- major fund. Um, and that is, when I say a major fund, that's defined in the accounting standards because of its size. It gets shown as its, its separate balance sheet and separate revenue and expenditure statement. And in this year, fiscal year twenty-four, your capital project funds, uh, met the definition of, of a major fund. So, and then you have the second to the last column of numbers, what we call the, the no, what is called the non-major governmental funds. That's sort of an aggregation, if you will, of all the funds that you have that don't meet the definition of, of a major fund. Uh, with the, with the grants fund, it's pretty much a, a break-even oper- operation. You spend the money, you seek reimbursement for it, uh, and so for the most part, the, the revenues and expenditures, if you want to glance over at fifteen, you see that they basically wa- wash each other out, normal and customary. Your capital project fund, um, you know, there's a, there's a lot of activity in this year. There was a little two point one million dollars that was transferred in from the capital reserve funds to pay some costs in that fund. Um, I know from conversations with Jack, that may go back to the general fund in, in future years, when the temporary or permanent financing of the project becomes fully available. So, uh, now, just to focus on the general fund for, for a minute. The focus really here is looking from the bottom of that first column of numbers on page thirteen, uh, coming up, two, two numbers. You see your total fund balance of twenty-eight point nine million dollars. That's the difference between your assets and, and, and your li- liabilities. Now, let's look at the individual components of that. Right above that, you have your unassigned fund balance. Uh, I'm, I will speak more on that in, in a minute. Your assigned fund balance is three hundred and eighty thousand. That, by largest, basically encumbrances as of June thirty, twenty-four, that were carried over into fiscal year twenty-five and are honored in fiscal twenty-five. And above that, uh, you have your committed fund balance. A committed fund balance, that twenty-five point one million dollars, that really represents your capital reserve funds. The expendable trust is sometimes what they are referred to. And if you'd like to make a note, on page nine of your M-DNA, uh, is a detailed list of that twenty-five point one million dollars. Uh, the largest single component of it is your facilities purchase and renovation expendable trust fund, and then the next largest one, uh, is your health and dental medical reserve and your special education expendable trust. Those are the three largest, uh, expendable trust funds that aggregate up to twenty-five point one million dollars. I think it's worthy of noting, uh, if, if, since it looked like some of you glanced back at page nine to see the detail, even if you didn't, just try to keep this in mind. The capital reserve funds themselves, as a total, not any individual one, but in total, went up almost five million dollars over, over the prior year. You know, specific funding went, went into those. And those are critical to any, or, any business or s- city, town, or school, school district to have ample reserve funds, especially for an organization that, um, well, I know you issued, I think it was almost nineteen million dollars in debt, uh, towards the end of last calendar year, and there's potentially much more, um, in, in the future for Concord School District. Um, having these capital reserves, which will be seen as very much a, a credit strength that can only help you uh, when it comes to, to selling your debt on the, on the open market. So, uh, just turning back to, to page thirteen for, for a minute, um, I, I guess I've talked about uh, assigned and, and committed. No need to get into the non-spendable piece. So let's go down to the unassigned. As that name kind of implies, there are no constraints on those dollars, or no, no restrictions on those dollars whatsoever. And at June thirty, twenty twenty-four, your unassigned fund balance, which largely will be the first place that most readers of your financial statements will turn, they'll look at that number, and they'll see three point four million dollars. And they'll note that that's about three and a half percent of your fiscal year twenty twenty-four, um, operating expenditures, which is not, which is consistent with way most school districts in, in this state. which is, not, which is consistent with way most school districts in, in this state operate. Um, but you'll also notice that it actually went down $1.1 million. Well, I'm going to, when we get to the budget versus actual page, we'll, we'll, we'll see why it went down, but I do want to point out.
Keep going.
Okay, do you mind if I keep going?
Yep, no, you're good.
But, there was a specific reason why I wanted to point out that your committed fund balance, or your capital reserve funds, went up almost 5 million. Well, if you just think about, I'll give you a preview, when we look at your budget versus actual page, you're going to see very strong general fund operating results mitigated by the use of fund balance. That was that use of fund balance that took the dollars out of unassigned and moved it up to committed. So, a specific action that was done to set those monies aside with particular purpose constraints on them, so. So, if I can, um, I'm going to pass on talking about the footnotes, um, but I certainly can answer questions that exist in there, but if we go all the way back to, to print page 43, um, this is your, your budget versus actual comparative schedule, and the focus here on page 43 is in that last col, column of numbers. You see that, uh, working from the top down, you see the total revenues came in greater than the, the budget anticipated by $588,000. Two-thirds of the way down, that last column of numbers, the expenditures came in less than the budget, uh, uh, made available of $2.8 million. Subtotal, budgetary results of operations with 3.4, 3.4 million, but the variances in the transfers in and out, kind of net to almo, almost nothing. So, you see overall budgetary excess, this is in the, uh, page 43, in the last column of numbers on the right, in the very lower right-hand corner. Your combined revenue surplus from budget to actual and expenditure surplus, budget to actual, is about $3.4 million. So, now, normally, I shouldn't say that, that was a poor choice of, poor choice of words. Now, this budgetary surplus would, is going to help drop and increase your unassigned fund balance. What's, what you don't necessarily see here is the fact that the district used $4.5 million during fiscal year '24. So, if you subtract $4.5 million that was used in fund balance, and you used it basically to put it into capital reserves, you come to a negative $1 million. That is why your unassigned fund balance, back on page 11, pardon me, 13, went down by a million dollars. Positive budgetary results of operations softened by the planned use of, of existing fund balance that you used, took it out of the unassigned fund balance, moved it up two rows into committed, so. That's a really fast overview of the financial statements. I want to talk about the single audit for, for, for a minute. That's the thinner of the two bound documents. Um, if you're looking at the title page, it's a, it's, it's, it's a mouthful.
It's easy.
Uh, yeah, there's, I, I'll try to summarize it, there are, there are essentially two reports in here. The first one is required by what I call GAGAS, sure auditors are known for their acronyms, G-A-G-A-S, generally accepted government auditing standards. If you read the letter, it's, and I please encourage you to, it's going to, it's going to define for you what a material weakness is, and it's going to define for you what a significant deficiency, and those are two classifications that auditors, if we were to find a, a, a weakness in your internal control structure, we would classify it as either a deficiency, a significant deficiency, or a material weakness. The professional standards require us to report, uh, material weaknesses and significant deficiencies to you. Uh, this is a very nice, short report, um, because on page two of the first of the two reports that are in here, uh, it tells you that based on the auditing standards we applied, which are generally accepted government auditing standards, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your internal controls, uh, systems. The second report, uh, is required by uniform guidance. Uniform guidance, or UG, uh, is sort of the federal rules and regulations about, uh, internal control requirements and compliance requirements over the expenditures of federal grants. So, as a recipient of, of federal grants, um, if it's more than 750, which it is in, 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 in our case here, we are required to reissue a uniform guidance report. We go through a determination to determine which federal program should be tested each year. It's all out there in the compliance supplement, if you want to know the, the process, I choose you know, it's something I, I get into. Uh, but this year, we looked at both the school lunch program and the ESRS program. Um, and this second report will also, again, de, define, uh, the definition of a material weakness and significant deficiency. Uh, once again, I'm pleased to be able to report to the district that, based on our work on the, on the federal programs that we looked at, we did not identify any significant deficiencies in, or material weaknesses in internal, in the internal control structure, nor did we find any compliance, uh, any, any areas of non-compliance over the application of federal, federal grant expenditures.
Yeah.
I took about 10 more minutes than I thought I was going to take, um, I, but in the end, that, that's still a fairly quick walkthrough of, of, of our process. I did, again, maybe just to recap a bit, and I'll try to answer any other questions that you may have. I did, on purpose, start with the governance letter, because I think, while most people like to hop into the numbers, I think starting with the governance letter makes sense, quite honestly, that's what you really pay us for. Um, and the single audit report is just, uh, that's where any problems with our internal, in your internal control structure would be identified. The numbers were good to look at, um, overall, um, you know, I think from a 630, 24 financial statement standpoint, your general funds, you have a solid general fund, you have good budgetary results of operations, the only reason that unassigned fund, uh, number went down is because of planned use of it. Oh, I said earlier, I was going to go back to, if you look on page nine of your MDNA, what I, I tried to articulate, four and a half million, pardon me, $3.5 million in good budgetary results softened by the four and a half million, gets you at a negative million, and that's why the unassigned fund balance went down, that's written in a paragraph form, I believe it is on page nine. If you want, I can go to that page, but I'll pause there, as I probably talked too much, and I'll try to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Yeah. Um, I'm feeling pretty good about our A-plus grades, it feels like we're doing really well. Outside of those defined, um, terms around deficiencies and material issues, was there any general advice that you gave the district on improving best practices, or, like, was there any room for improvement that we should know about?
Oh, I, I'm sure that we did. I would need my audit team here to answer that, that question. Uh, it's a good question, um, I can try to reach out, um, if there was anything, um, I do apologize, I.
No, that's okay. I was just curious.
My team. Um, it was certainly nothing met the definitions that, that are outlined in the, in the letters.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything, Jack, you probably know too, on how our funds are collateralized in here? Would it be in the big pocket?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are, it's in the footnotes, probably footnote three or four, um.
I had to test you on that.
Go ahead.
Footnotes, get in there.
I feel like I was just testing.
You had the page numbers down really well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you did. Um, but Jack, we go through, we don't, we do try party, or we don't do try party?
We do not participate in that.
Okay.
Out, going out over the wire at night in the 250, we do not participate in that, not something we've, Maureen and I have talked about that, we're not fans of that idea, um, so we do not participate, even though we get pressed to.
Yeah.
Yep, every year.
You know, if, on the footnotes, that certainly is a footnote that, uh, gets questions on. Another one, um, is the footnote on the long-term debt. Um, I, I talked about capital reserves being, uh, a prudent thing to have and, and to do, uh, when it comes to, you know, future, you know, selling of future debt. Footnote 11, page 28, again, you don't have to, to turn to it, uh, but at the top, it shows what I refer to as the amortization of the existing long, long-term, term debt. And based on my experience, financial institutions and credit rating agencies, they don't always ask, they sometimes do, but they don't always ask how much debt a government organization has, they more frequently will ask, how rapidly is it being paid out? And really what they're getting at, in my opinion, is how much of it's being paid out in the next 10 years? And in your case, at least 70% of it's being paid off in the next 10 years. That would be seen very well, positively. So, I just, you get into the footnotes, on footnote three, I had made my notes in case it came up, I just took the liberty to share that with you. Again, sometimes in a small group like this, it's a little bit easier.
Yeah.
But those are some of the key, uh, indices that, again, based on doing this for a long, long time, that financial institutions will look at. So, when it comes to structuring future debt, keep those types of things in mind. There are ways to address it, you know, I have other clients that, you know, issued a lot of debt for, for, for schools, and they purposely did it over a 30-year period. And, you know what, it makes my indices here, it skews it. Well, that's why you have things like an MDNA, to tell the reader, no. And financial institutions would pick up on it, and you could reference them to your MDNA, if at some point in time, that percentage comes down. It doesn't mean it's a problem, but spell it out for the reader, don't leave it to chance.
That's fair. Um, and then, Maureen and Jack, anything that you guys are particularly really proud of, or you want to highlight, or this is a big beast that you are running, and this is no easy task.
He's making it grow another year.
Yeah.
We applaud you.
No, this is fantastic, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, no, this is great, any other questions or thoughts?
No, thank you, very solid work.
Well, and we've, we've worked with, again, it's been Melant and Heath, Melant and multiple different names, it's not that we're changing auditors, it's mergers and acquisitions, um, we've bid this out, I think, three times, um, over the last 15 years, and, um, come back to, well, now it's C-Biz, so our agreement with them, with an option to continue is up next year, but, uh, as Scott said, they need more accountants, we're not finding much in the way of, uh, people that are going into this, so, um, we're just fortunate that , uh, things are moving along, and, um, I also have Maureen and Danielle's support, which is critical, been lucky in my 14 years here, to, to have good people around you.
Yeah.
Trust me, it's not just me. Far from me.
I have a side, Maureen, this is the first time seeing you two, you are, your brand within the industry or in this space is well-known, and you are so well-respected, and people speak quite highly of you, so, yeah.
So.
Not Jack.
No.
I'm just kidding, we love Jack, Jack, we're kidding.
But he leans on Maureen.
That's, yes.
Now, thank you very so much, so, so much, it's, this helps us all sleep.
A good group of people, knowing with the grants and.
Yeah.
Maureen, Tyra, and all together, it's a lot, so.
Scott, thank you, it's reassuring to read through this report, which I will do some weekend, um, but, uh, thank you for highlighting it, the key points to, for us, and pointing out, you know, the areas that you identified as key items, so, appreciate it.
Quick question, I assume that this, these documents are public, so if any of our constituents were interested, this would be something that we could.
I was going to say, they're probably already given to Terry, after we get them, we post them on the website, they go back the last 10 years or more.
Great.
So, yep.
For anyone who needs weekend reading.
That's right. A little light reading on the weekends, I know.
Um, is there, this is just a general question, so, for the state of New Hampshire, is, because I know, I mean, we had, the state had a website, we could pull one, go in and poll folks audits, is it like that in New Hampshire as well, or?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
So, like, for me, we could go in and I could poll the audits of different government entities.
Yeah.
Do we have a similar system in New Hampshire, or probably not?
Uh, no, but you, you can from, uh, what I would call the, the federal audit clearinghouse.
Oh.
So, you know, once this was completed, again, this goes back to, because you're a recipient of and expend federal dollars, it requires this single audit, that's a little bit of a slang term, uh, but it gets uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse, FAC.gov.
That's probably what I was looking at.
And you could, you could search for Concord School District.
Yep.
State of New Hampshire, and you're going to see them up there.
Yep, that's probably what I was looking at.
Yeah.
Yep, serious, awesome, cool.
Once this is complete, we, if we have, we probably already have, give it to the city, we give it to our bond counsel, who also has requirements for their reporting, and we give it to the bank, um, who else do we give it to? The clearinghouse, obviously. The rating agencies, S&amp;P and Moody's, they requested, Hilltop Securities, as I mentioned, our bond counsel, uh, I mean, our financial advisors.
Yeah.
So, um, they all get cover letters with a copy of it, so.
And the Department of Revenue gets our single audit.
Oh, yeah.
And then they'll make.
So, and the DRC.
Oh, yeah, Department of Revenue also gets a copy, yep.
Thank you.
So.
I forgot what to do. So, I call this meeting to.
Oh, I'm.
Oh, wait, no, we have more questions, Kara has.
No, I was going to say, I moved to adjourn.
Oh, yes.
Second is.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against or want to talk about it, or abstain?
No, essentially, just no.
Great, okay.
As much fun as it would be to talk.
I call this to order. I'm the greatest chair, just so you know.
You actually turned my call, we adjourned.